Good evening. The January 11th, 2022 Regular School Board Meeting of ISD 623 Roseville Area Schools is hereby called to order. Kirk Johnson, could you please call the roll tonight?
Of course. Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Chu.
Here.
Chair Bogaszewski.
Here.
Treasurer Goggins.
Here.
And Kirk Johnson's here.
Thank you, sir. Madam Superintendent, do we have any adjustments to our agenda this evening?
We do. I would like to move the COVID health and safety update from a non-action item to an action item 9B, along with the proposal for distance learning.
Thank you. Do we have any objections or if not, I think we should, we need to move to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so adjusted. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, do we have any announcements from fellow board members? Seeing none, I know we do have an announcement from the district and I welcome to the podium, the Parkview Principal Kristin Smith Olsen, who I believe has an announcement and will be introducing someone to us this evening. So Kristin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Bogaszewski, school board members, superintendent. I'm thinking I'm too tall for the superintendent leg. I'm here tonight to honor this fine person. I want to give you a little bit of information first. The National Education Association defines national board certification as a voluntary advanced teaching credential that goes beyond state licensure. National board certification has national standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. It is the most respected professional certification available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. Teachers who receive national board certification have met high standards through study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and probably the most important, the peer review. It's my honor to introduce Jessica Telsky, our newest national board certified teacher in Roseville schools. And I'm lucky enough to have Jess as a first grade teacher at Parkview. Just help.
I don't know if I, do I say something? Oh. Well, thank you very much for the kind words. I have, I have three thank yous that I'd like to say I thought about it. And the first one would be to Jenny Ekman. She is my first grade partner teacher and she's also nationally certified. She pushed me to get the certification and she spent many hours reviewing, working with me, helping me through my papers. So she has been a huge support. My second thank you is to Sarah Buxton for being my support at home and pushing me to not give up and to listen to all my complaining that happened over the last two years. And then finally, I thought about it and I'd like to thank the school board and Dr. Lake. I've watched several school board meetings online and I think when I talk to my first grade class, the most important thing I tell them is kindness. You can be the smartest, you can be the most athletic, the most musical, but if you're not kind, that doesn't matter. And I've watched several, obviously, meetings and I just want to thank you for continuing to push that kindness acceptance of all, whether it's race, gender, sexuality, whatever it is that you continue to push that to the forefront because for the students, I really think that is the number one priority in the classroom. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Jessica. And I know that, you know, particularly in the last couple of years, the time and effort that it takes to do what's required to receive board certification is, it must have been tremendously just draining on you. So thank you because I think it's a, it's a model and a kind of a thing that we, we know many teachers aspire to. And I think for those who don't know, less than 10% of the teaching staff at the district has achieved board certification. It really is an honor and really does reflect a dedication and commitment to the profession and to bettering yourself and to serving as a role model for those around you. So congratulations and thank you for joining our ranks of board certified staff here at the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to the oaths of office for our board members who have been reelected and our newly elected board members. So our administrative person, Michelle, I think will be administering the oath. So I don't know what order you'd want to call people to the podium to do this.
We'll go alphabetically if that's okay.
It's okay with me.
Sure.
Yeah, and if someone wants to come up and take a photo from a better angle, I mean, feel free to do that. Seriously. Come on up and take the picture. Yeah?
Well, the family is, the family is, you joined some of the podium.
Oh, yes. And not only that, you're welcome, man. If you want your family to stand with you.
Get in the picture.
Mine did when I did mine. That was.
There's always a critic. Right.
But if you want to join him, yeah, please.
So I'll ask you to raise your right hand. I'll read it first, but you have your text there and then you'll just go ahead. So it would be, "I, your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office for the best of my judgment and ability."
I, Manish Clark, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
That's it? Congratulations.
Thank you, Board Director Clark.
Picture time. One more. Thank you.
So thank you, Board Director Clark. Please, please come and take a seat at the table as our newest board member. Thank you.
And Director Goggins, would you like to go back? You can raise your right hand. And it will be, "I, your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office for the best of my judgment and ability."
I, Kitty Goggins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome back, Director Goggins.
Thank you.
And Director Johnson. All right, you can raise your right hand. I, your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
I, Curtis Johnson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Director Johnson, welcome back.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Next, annually, we do also, it's recommended that we do reaffirm our school board governance policies. So I would entertain a motion to do that, to reform our governing policies.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our governing policies have been reaffirmed for another year. Now we'll move into the board organization and offices. It is required by the Minnesota statutes that at our first meeting in January, we do organize and select the chair, clerk, and treasurer. The, while it's not mandated or termed officially, the, the tradition and history within the Roseville district has been for those of us who have been officers to serve for two years and then rotate to give others the opportunity to do that and serve in that capacity. And so we'll go through that process tonight and select our new chair, clerk, and treasurer. So with that, I would like to request any nominations for chair. Kitty?
I would like to nominate Director Johnson for the chair position.
Thank you. Any additional nominations for chair? Any additional nominations for chair? Any additional nominations for chair? Having asked three times and hearing none, nominations are closed. I would entertain a motion that, given that he's the only candidate, that we vote by acclamation to accept and approve Curtis' role as chair for the next two years. Someone maybe move that.
I move by acclamation Curtis as chair for the next two years.
Second.
Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. With that, I will turn the gavel over to Chief Johnson, who will proceed with the clerk and treasurer business.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It has been an honor to serve as chair for the last couple of years and I'm only thankful that my fellow board members had confidence in me that it didn't kick me out of the role before today. So thank you all.
Great job, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah.
Quite a different view from over here. So just before I start, Mike, really thank you for your service in the last two years. You've been exemplary and I can only hope to follow in your footsteps and do half as well.
Well, you're, you're quite welcome. And as we know, with Kitty and others, there's been a great history even before myself of wonderful chairs who.
Absolutely.
Really, you know, helped us organize and get going and really run our meetings well. So thank you very much, sir. Thank you. I look forward to serving with you.
Okay. So we've got two more offices. So looks like we need a clerk. So I will accept nominations for clerk.
Chair. I was going to say that. Chair Johnson. I nominate Director Anderson to the position of clerk.
Is there a second?
You don't need to second as a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you.
But what we do do is you ask three times if there are additional nominations.
Thank you. Are there any additional nominations for clerk? Are there any additional nominations for clerk? Any additional nominations for clerk? With that, I will close nominations for clerk. And since you are the only one, then I would accept the motion.
I accept, I move that Director Anderson become our clerk. And since it's uncontested, that we just vote by approval.
Second, if, if even necessary. There you go.
Okay. All right. Director, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right. Congratulations, clerk. Anderson. Which leaves us a treasurer spot. So I will accept nominations for treasurer. For Anderson.
Chair Johnson, I would like to nominate Director Rose Chu for the office of treasurer.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? I am now closing nominations for treasurer and will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve Rose as our treasurer again by acclamation as unanimous vote.
Which we would anyway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I say that?
You can vote for yourself.
You can vote for yourself. That's right.
Those opposed, nay? Congratulations, treasurer. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So that takes us to designation of our official newspaper. So.
Yep. So we just moved Pioneer Press as our official newspaper and is the same as in the past.
Okay.
So a vote again.
So I would entertain a motion.
I move that the same Pioneer Press is our official newspaper for the calendar year 2022, 23.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Okay. And that takes us to community input. Did I miss something?
Well, yeah, yes. Right. Right. Yes. Right. Community input before consent agenda.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
If you'll bear with me while my timer pops up on the screen, our first speaker will be Mike Gregory and he is a parent and community member.
School board members and superintendent, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being here tonight. My name is Mike Gregory. My family and I first moved to Roseville in 1991. We chose Roseville because we wanted our children to go to Brimhall Elementary School. We found Brimhall to be one of the most diverse schools in Minnesota. It was like a little United Nations. We were not disappointed and it was a great experience for ourselves and our children. It's my pleasure to be involved at the school. When we first moved here, I spoke to the principal and I asked how I could help. He told me I could head up the parent involvement committee. I thought that meant to involve and recruit more people for the PTA. I asked him what that meant and he told me I was a leader and I could determine the direction. I developed a poll, statistically valid sampling program, and invited parents to attend with free pizza and daycare, and we had a focus group. What I learned, among other things, that single parents really needed and wanted was a night out. The following year, we set up a Friday night once a month with teachers, PTA, and three hours of watching children from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Friday night. We had popcorn, hot dogs, orange drink donated McDonald's, vegetables, fruit, open gym, a game room, a dance room, a reading room, and other activities. We charged $1. If you were late in picking up your children, there was a $25 fine. We never had a late parent in any of those nine months. Following the year, we conducted the same poll and we found out that our parents were extremely pleased with having had that initiative. What this taught me as a white, middle-class male with a set of values is that I needed to listen. I needed to provide what others needed, not what I wanted to provide. This also taught me that rather than recruiting for the PTA, the PTA simply needed to encourage all parents to read to their children every day. Generally, single parents really did not have the time to be involved with the PTA for the most part. Reading to their children or what their children, or being with their children was far more important than being with the PTA. Why I'm sharing this with you here today is to offer perspective and to thank you. I want to thank the superintendent, principals, the teachers, the staff, and everyone associated with this district for the work you do and for listening. I was deeply saddened at the death of one of your principals recently. This hit me very hard. I know his twin brother very well. I'm a twin and it was emotionally very hard. I recently had brought to my attention an article about the principal at Brimhall School. I could hardly believe what I was reading. The article was entitled "Threats Burnout Pushed a Minnesota Teacher of the Year to Quit." He's still the principal at Brimhall. He quit another broader position. From a commentary from Minnesota Public Radio, I heard, "I received threats that I should kill myself, threats that I will be hung through a military tribunal. I've been told that they're monitoring me on social media and things like that and it ebbs and flows." There's been several stories written about me through the various and I hesitate to even call them media outlets across the country. And when one of those gets posted and a story rehashed and then I notice the significant upticks on those kind of hate-filled emails.
Sir, I'm so sorry. Three minutes.
Am I done? Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't. Bottom line was, I came here to thank all of you and the teachers and everybody at Brimhall. And when I called and spoke with them, they, they put out an email. The person I spoke to at Brimhall School broke down and cried, made me cry. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Keep up the good work. Protect all of our children as you're doing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Monka and she is a parent.
Hi, I came here today to ask you to keep schools open and to change the quarantine policy. Little did I know until I arrived that tonight you would be voting on moving our kids to distance learning. So my speech is also about that. Recently, I was told that my kid, who's in middle school, would have to quarantine for 10 days after getting COVID and that any siblings, if there were any siblings in the house, they'd have to quarantine for 14 days. So a kid without COVID, without any symptoms, even with a negative test, would have to quarantine and miss high school for 14 days. These are kids who are, who are trying to get into college. These are kids of color. You know, you guys say so much every single meeting, equity. You'll talk about it again today, I'm sure. It's on the agenda. Equity, kids of color, we love them, we care about them so much, but you're failing them. The reading rates for white kids in Roseville schools is 75% compared to, for white kids, is 75% compared to 36% for black kids. Math at 68% compared to 27%. Yet you're going to try to shut down the school and go to distance learning? Who is going to be hurt the most? These kids are going to be hurt the most, the ones that you say you care about the most. And it's just atrocious. All the white schools up in the rural areas and suburbs keep their schools open. Minneapolis, St. Paul, Roseville closes it. We have the biggest population of kids of color. And I don't know how you guys can keep spouting how much you care when, when practical things like keeping school open, the only thing you're, you're here to do can't stay, oh, can't be done. I don't like the fact that the COVID policy is different for kids who are vaccinated and unvaccinated. We all know that people who are vaccinated get COVID. One of the people arguing at the Supreme Court, one of the attorneys arguing for mandates was vaccinated, had a booster, was at home because he had COVID. You know, that happens. We all know that's reality. We all know everyone who's vaccinated gets COVID. People shouldn't be treated differently. My mother-in-law and my, my mother-in-law and my sister-in-law died of COVID in September within a week of each other. They were both vaccinated. Don't tell me they don't get sick and die. They should not be treated differently. Even the CDC has acknowledged that a 10-day quarantine is too long. And they talk about, a lot about how kids should be educated. They acknowledge science that the Omicron virus is not that bad. It's almost 100% of the cases. But in, in summary, I'd like to quote a few of the people that a lot of you know and trust who are completely against distance learning. The Biden administration said reducing quarantines after COVID exposure would help prevent absenteeism and learning loss. The CDC director said it is clear the best pace for children is in school and learning and it can be done safely. The Minneapolis, Minneapolis mayor Jacob Fry has said, "We need to make sure kids are in school so that they can learn." He's concerned about all the carjacking. There was a carjacking at my gym a few weeks ago, experienced fitness, 13-year-old. Terrified, you know, to go work out. This is what happens. We wonder why things are the way they are. This is what happens when we don't have schools open. So I'm here to ask you to not cancel school. I'm sure, I don't, I'm asking you not to cancel schools, have a reasonable quarantine policy, quarantine policy. And I'm sad that I have to sit here.
Okay.
Begging for schools to stay open when your only job is to teach our kids.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Bart and she's a community member. My sister and my mother-in-law, my sister, I think they're dead too. I watch them live in the eyes.
Okay. Last month, I asked the school board, "How are you protecting girls in their bathrooms and locker rooms?" When an unjust law states that boys are allowed to use the girls' bathrooms if they happen to feel gender fluid that day. The response I received was an affirmation of the law that I already pointed out was unjust. The law is unjust because it takes away the rights of girls to privacy in their bathrooms. Our countries had many unjust laws. Anyone remember slavery? Fortunately, the Republican Party was formed to abolish it. Segregation, women's suffrage. Our country is not immune to unjust laws. This is another unjust law because it discriminates against girls. Again, I ask, what are you doing to protect girls in their bathrooms and locker rooms? Are you letting parents and girls know that boys may be using these private spaces? Do you take a roll call each day, having students declare if they are transgender, gender-fluid, non-binary, et cetera, each day and make sure that girls are aware of who they are sharing their bathrooms with on any given day? As a mother of six girls and a taxpaying resident of the Roseville School District, I and every other taxpaying resident deserves a real answer to the question of how you are protecting girls in their bathrooms and locker rooms. When a girl is attacked and/or raped in her bathroom or locker room, every parent feels that pain. And every taxpaying resident of the Roseville School District ends up footing the bill for the lawsuit aimed at the reckless manner in which this law was applied. So again, I ask, what are you doing to protect girls in their bathrooms and locker rooms? And I would appreciate a real answer this time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ruth Ona and she is a parent and community member.
Hello, neighbors. So I looked at the equity training curriculum being taught to the staff of Roseville Area Schools. And it's very similar to the CRT narrative that whiteness and whites are oppressors as if skin color determined character or the heart of an individual. This very sad racist theory says, quote, "Speak your truth," parentheses acknowledging that whiteness is part of the truth, parentheses. Like the Spanish Inquisition, they're looking for people to confess whiteness as if it's a conspiratorial supremacy or oppressive movement that's ongoing in America today. We, we all thank the Lord. This is not the case. Martin Luther King Jr. said graciously, "We must not lead a, this must not lead us to a distrust of all white people. For many of our white brothers, as evidenced by their presence here today, have come to realize their destiny is tied up in our destiny." True. The equity, equity training at Ross is the sort of narrative of a Marxist narrative, working to bring a revolution, to overthrow a free nation which is constitutionally run. Further down in your training, equity training manual says equity, quote, "Equity means recognizing that we do not all start from the same place," unquote. And that's true as individuals, we're all, we're all at a different place. We're all unique. But you need to also add that equity also means we do all start from the same place in America as far as, like Martin Luther King again said, "I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. Each staff person and student has equal worth and value based on they were created in God's image. They were created, not evolved by happenstance, but there is a magnificent plan of God. They are greatly loved by the one who created them, that we are not a victim of chance, evolution, or oppressive social structure, but at birth, even in the mother's womb, we have basic human value of a purpose, a destiny, a plan.
True.
By God for their lives, not a chance or accident." Sorry, it's kind of hard to breathe through this. I hope you could hear me.
And our last speaker is Angela Byrne. She is a parent.
Good evening. Angela Byrne, Harambe parent. I'm speaking on behalf of a coalition of folks that are here tonight. With me I have.
Sorry, Angela.
Oh, sorry.
Before, before you start, I'm just going to have you. Okay, thank you. You said you were speaking on behalf of a delegation. If, if any of those people are here, could you have them raise their hands?
Yep. And then my husband and child are here, but they're in the back speaking to Director Smith.
Very good.
Thank you.
Could I just be longer?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah. In, in expediency, instead of having all four of us speak individually and using 12 minutes, we'll use a delegation time of 10 minutes. Thank you. So I'm speaking here tonight with. So I'm speaking here tonight, with me I have Anita McDonald, who's a longtime Roseville resident and mother of three children who are all Brimhall alum and are graduating, have graduated or are at Ross. I also have Karen Henry with me, who is a mother of two children at Ross. As I said before, my husband Patrick and my daughter Hen is here, who is trans, and she does exist, her existence is valid, her bathroom use is valid, and I will be here defending that every time. And then, I did have some folks that planned on coming tonight but had last-minute conflicts or they had positive COVID cases come up. So Kathy Vermont sends her support, she's a co-founder of Do Good Roseville, longtime Roseville resident, and she's been here many times in support of DEI initiatives by the district. Lynn Huberty, who is a co-founder of the Roseville activist Facebook group with nearly 500 members, she's a member of, or a mom of four, all of which are either in or will be in Roseville schools. And then also, you've received emails from Corinza Fisher and Carolyn Halverson, who are both mothers of children in the district, as well as Dana Thompson, who is a community member and a former city council candidate, and all of them are here supporting, sending their support at the beginning of this year for continued efforts on DEI work throughout the district, in the individual buildings, to make sure that we continue to close those racial gaps that were spoken about in a previous public comment. So now me speaking as an individual, very quickly, in relating to support of DEI work, the debate about whether or not to close our schools, I think, is lacking nuance in that our schools have become community hubs. Children receive a safe space, a safe physical space, they receive food, they receive education, they even receive healthcare here that is unavailable out in the community to many of them. I think if we're gonna actually have the debate of whether or not to leave schools open as them being the safest spaces for them to be while we are in the midst of a global pandemic with another enormous surge of another variant that we're still learning about, is that we need to talk about how we as a society have declined to prioritize equity in housing, in income and jobs, in education, and in healthcare. Any aspect, you name it, we can find racial disparities in it. So our schools are picking up all of that slack to make sure that children are cared for here, because that is the one place that we can actually count on that, and we're still working every day to make sure we improve it, so that way, the children are not discriminated here in the same way they're discriminated against out in society. Declaring someone's heart based on their skin color has been codified into every aspect of our society and our law, in that it has been to advantage people of my skin color, who are white, and to disadvantage and to declare people that are not white as hoodlums, thugs, you name it, all the derogatory terms that I don't even wanna say here because they are so loaded. So I'm interested to see the conversation you have tonight about keeping our schools closed, that the folks that are here with me tonight are starting out this year recommitting to supporting your work in continuing DEI work in this district and making sure that we continue to close those gaps. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last one?
That was the last one.
Okay. Then we're gonna move to our consent agenda. And, I'm doing everything not to call you Chair Bogashevsky.
There you go. Chair Johnson, I will immediately accept the consent agenda. Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. And Director Bogashevsky's gonna do gifts.
That's right, so as is our tradition, we do-
First time in two years.
Thank you, that's right, absolutely. We do pull out our gifts from the consent agenda.
And also start doing study sessions.
That's right, that's right, I know, I know. So once again, we have been truly honored and gratified by gifts to the school from various members of our community, and as is our practice, we do list those at our meetings. So first off, we have a gift of school supplies, games, toys, and winter clothing for students in need from Sue Wozniak, so thank you, Sue. Roseville Lutheran Church has also donated winter clothing and a gift of funds in the form of grocery gift cards, also for students in need. And from Mighty Cause, on behalf of Give Minnesota donor, a gift of funds, again for school-wide needs, and all those are geared towards Central Park Elementary School, those three. Lorenz Et Cetera Inc. also donated a gift of, monetary gift, to be used at the principal's discretion at Edgerton Elementary School. We had additional monetary gift to be used at the principal's discretion for Falcon Heights Elementary School from the Black Bod Your Cause on behalf of Sean Young. Also, from Black Bod Your Cause on behalf of Chad Erickson, a gift of monetary funds to be used at the principal's discretion at Little Canada Elementary School. We also had a gift of funds for the wrestling program from Doug Sneltzer and John J. Fridlington for Roseville Area High School. Also for Roseville Area High School, we had a gift of monetary funds from Little Canada Canadian Days for the basketball shooting machine for the boys and girls basketball program. We also had a gift of funds for use of the Nordic Ski Team at Roseville Area High School by Podium Sports Marketing, Inc., out in Anoka, so that's nice of them. We also had a gift of funds to support the food shelf at Roseville Area High School from the Thomas D. Rower and Carol Rower Trust. Also for Roseville Area High School, a gift of funds for coaching staff, gear, and equipment from the Roseville Boys Backcourt Club. A gift of funds for the food shelf at Ross from Greg and Nicole Gerroth. A gift of funds to be used towards coaching staff at the Ross, at the Roseville Area High School from the Ross Girls Hockey Booster Club. Another gift of monetary funding for food shelf use at Ross by Jennifer and Troy Shaly. Another gift of funds for the food shelf at Ross by Gina and Carl Hoxstrom. Another gift of monetary funds for use in the wrestling program and advertisement insert by the Falcon Heights Lauderdale Lions Club for Ross. Another gift for Ross from Mark Lammers, four trombones and a trumpet for use in the elementary instrumental music program. And finally, a gift of funds to be used for Angel Fund lunch accounts by Premier Bank, also geared towards Roseville schools in general, to help support kids who make use of the Angel Fund for their lunch fees. So, again, tremendous gratitude for all of this and all that we're given, whether it's gifts of goods or funding, again, just reflects the tremendous support that we're blessed with here in the district. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we are really fortunate to have such a given community. Okay, let's look, our next thing on line is gonna be audit update, the Sher Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sure. So I wanted to just provide you with an audit update. This would have originally was scheduled to be an action item this evening. The final presentation of the audit has been further delayed. I wanna touch on that just a little bit, first and foremost, obviously, as the Director of Business Operations for the District, I take full responsibility for that. We have encountered a couple of challenges. COVID-19 continues to impact the duties even of the financial staff within the district. Also, with the CARES funds, the federal funds that we've received, those just really started flowing to us last spring. There's increased financial reporting, I think I shared that a little bit, and then even the way that they test the use of those funds, so that's been new to our audit firm and to us, and some of this we're figuring out as we go along. And also, we work with Clifton Larson Allen, who we've worked with since the early 2000s, Dennis Hugavine, who is actually wonderful, he just retired as of December 31st, so we're going through some changes there. And in addition, our manager that worked our audit had moved on, so there's been some turnover in staff, and just overall, even turnover with staff accountant, with some new staff accountants, and that's really something that I should've worked better to manage with, and the communication back and forth, because we're doing all of this electronically, and a lot of it, you know, via Zoom and sending documents back and forth. So, and then also, this was our final phase of our construction and LTFM funds and whatnot, so obviously, it has been delayed longer than we had anticipated. The final report was actually due to MDE on December 31st, I've shared that information with them. This does not impact our financial condition, there again, it's just something that we take very seriously, as far as reporting in a timely manner, and there's no financial penalty. So we are taking steps for better management of the timeline, and Clifton Larson Allen will be out and share the results of the audit on January 25th. So I'll stand for any questions.
Can I say something?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the update. I think, no, it is our responsibility as school board to ensure financial stability and all that, so this is important.
Absolutely.
But also understandably, I mean, I think about all that is going on, and the staff turnover, which is happening all over, thank you for trying to manage it, and thank you for the audit you're doing in order to make sure that the funding that we are getting and all the extra reporting is happening. So it's a balance act, I know there's a lot going on, I just wanna acknowledge that. This is no, this is extraordinary times, and so I know you're doing your best, and we'll just keep, right, keep pushing, and glad to hear that it's gonna come on January 25th. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's important to add, because you already mentioned missing the deadline, but there is no penalty.
There is no penalty.
I mean, do you realize, there's no penalty, and they, in the process, they actually granted us an extension, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's not something that we like to do.
Not to do, okay.
Yeah, but it happens.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that takes us to-
The appointment of Equity Alliance Board.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to an appointment of Equity Alliance Minnesota Board Representative.
Sure, so I can actually lead this off then, I guess, because I've been our representative to Minnesota Equity Alliance the last several years, and even before that, I think I succeeded Kitty in that role. I am currently Chair of that board, which includes representatives from the five districts that are part of Equity Alliance Minnesota. And in fact, just to let you know, I'm also going to be the Equity Alliance Minnesota Board Liaison on the Equity Alliance Minnesota Foundation that was recently formed, to be a legal charitable foundation, so that it will expand their ability to apply for grants from organizations that only give to organizations that are formerly charities. So, we just had our first meeting a week or so ago, so that's kinda getting off the ground right now, there's a whole slew of funding sources, 15 or 20 that this year they're gonna get going on to try and get grants and apply. So I've enjoyed the work, I am interested in continuing in that role, so would welcome the chance to keep on as our rep to Equity Alliance Minnesota.
Can I nominate the reappointment of Mike, Director Bogashevsky, to represent us on the Equity Alliance Minnesota Board? Just for the community's sake, that is a board, that we have, every single district who is a part of it has a representative on their board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye? Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Keep doing my best there, thank you.
Okay, and so, so now we're going to have the COVID health and safety update.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd invite my colleagues to join me at the table. Wonderful. Thank you, and this certainly is something we were not looking to bring to the board at this time. As Superintendent, there is nothing I take more seriously than the safety of our students and staff in Roseville schools. Absolutely pains me to make the following recommendation. This evening, I'm recommending the school board approve an emergency proposal to shift all grades to distance learning for two weeks, beginning next week, and cancel school this Friday to allow teachers time to prepare for this transition and ensure that elementary students have devices for distance learning. This is not a decision any of us wanted to make. We have taken great care to keep our schools open for in-person learning because we do know that it is best for students academically and their social, emotional well-being. We have seen other metro area school districts close for the same reason, with almost no notice to families. We wanted to provide as much notice as possible of this difficult decision, recognizing the hardship it places on our families. At this time, we'd like to provide additional data and rationale that will better paint the picture of our emergency staffing shortage. And I'll turn it over to Director of Communications, Josh Collins.
Thank you, Superintendent Lake. Just to provide you with some of the latest figures, we currently have the seven-day case rate per 100,000 residents in Ramsey County is 1,041. That is equivalent to, in the previous year, when we were, when we had thresholds, that the state would say that were points, decision points, where we'd be strongly encouraged to shift. You feel recalled, so that is equivalent to 167.7 in the 14-day rate per 10,000 residents. That is three times the level that the state previously would have required schools to close and shift to distance learning for all grades. So the case rate is extremely high in Ramsey County. We have, we continue to track rates and vaccination rates and also new COVID cases for our students and staff. During the week of December 25th through December 31st, we had 119 students, and actually, that is, that number is low, because we continue to have shortages even in our health offices, which my colleague Deb Leigand will speak to, but that number will be updated and we do expect it to increase. So that was 119 new cases in students, for a total of 552 cases this school year, and for staff, 19 cases, again, that is a low number. We, just to update you on the percentage of staff and students who are vaccinated, presently 85% of our staff are vaccinated, and the remainder would be providing us with proof of weekly, I'm sorry, weekly negative tests, because as you know, you approved a requirement for district staff to be vaccinated. For our students, we are seeing that number increase. Overall, the percentage of our students who are vaccinated is 57%. If you look at it by elementary versus secondary, though, you see why that number is lower. 73% of our secondary students are vaccinated and 43% of elementary. We do hope to see that number continue to go up as more families are able to get their students with a second vaccine and eventually boosters. Those are the data points that I wanted to share, and I think with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Deb.
And we have a slight change in plan. At this time, I'd like for Michelle, if you'd please play the video. Our colleague Melissa Sonic is Assistant Superintendent in Roseville Area Schools, and she is home with COVID in her family, so I ask that she describe the staffing shortage in our schools to the board and community at this time, and then we'll turn it over to Deb Leigand, followed by discussion at the board table. And then we'll turn it over to Deb Leigand, followed by discussion at the board table. And if we can't get the video up, we can read the script that Melissa created for us as well.
There are academic, emotional, and social benefits to students being in school with routine and structure. And, as you have heard, there is a high number of positive COVID cases among students and staff that is currently creating a staffing shortage. I apologize for not being in person tonight, but unfortunately, we have COVID in our home. My daughter has COVID, and with my symptoms, we thought it best that I share a video presentation instead of being in person. I want to begin by sharing some data around our absence rate. The average staff absence rate per week this fall is about 185.
Would you like to hear it read versus the low volume?
Is it the same, it's the same text?
It is the same text.
Sure. The one is rated, that might be easier.
Yes, so the community can hear it too.
I'm wondering if, Michelle, if you have that pulled up, if Delon or Jake would be willing to read that? Again, this is in the voice of the person responsible for supervising all of the schools, working closely with principals in our schools. Thank you, Delon, Mr. Smith.
Absolutely. So it says, "Good evening. First, it's important to note, we all want kids in school. There are academic, emotional, and social benefits to students being in school with routine and structure. And as you have heard, there's a high number of positive COVID cases among students and staff that is creating a staffing shortage. I apologize for not being in person tonight, but unfortunately, we have COVID in our home. My daughter has COVID, and with my symptoms, we thought it best I share a video presentation instead of being in person. I want to begin by sharing some data around our absence rate. The average staff absence per week this fall was 185.7 district-wide. Our typical fill rates prior to COVID were 85%. The fill rate for substitute teachers and paraprofessionals this fall has been roughly 48%. The first week in January, there were 302 absences with a 27.5% fill rate. We are currently facing significant staffing shortages. What is especially complex is we have staff absences that are typical: cold, flu, life events, sick family members, personal leave, et cetera. But in addition to that, we have absences due to COVID. When a staff member is out with COVID, it's not like they are out one to two days. They are out several days. We also have multiple staff members out with COVID: principals, teachers, specialists, paraprofessionals, health assistants, nurses, bus drivers, the list goes on. We also have staff who are out because their children have COVID or their daycare is closed due to COVID. We also have more and more families opting to keep their students home due to the high number of positive COVID cases in our schools. There have been reports from individual schools on any given day, they have 15-plus staff members out and unfield, meaning no subs. We currently have two schools with 35% or more of the staff out. For example, one school has the following staff out today: nine teachers out today, six of the teachers are confirmed COVID-positive. Of the nine who are out today, six are classroom teachers, and there are 17 classroom teachers total at this particular school, plus one specialist, one EL teacher, and one behavior coach. The health assistant is out as well. And just as a side note, roughly half of our health assistants are out. This school has two total subs with teachers on call, and a district admin is subbing in grade three until noon. All of the rest of the classes are covered internally with staff pulled from their regular duties. This could include intervention staff, EL teachers, lead teachers, pairs with teaching licenses, the building principal, et cetera. At this same school, another teacher will be out starting tomorrow due to their child testing positive. This school is hurting. When a school is hurting, it's like being a mom and watching your child hurt. It breaks you, and you do everything in your power to help. Here are some of the things we have done to problem-solve the staff, excuse me, the sub shortage and staffing issues. We have hired four floating subs, and we hope to continue until we have at least one in each elementary school. The postings are up, and if you know any candidates, please encourage them to apply. We assign four to six pre-assigned subs using teachers on call Monday through Friday late this fall. This week, we shifted to, that to one pre-assigned sub for each school. This is in addition to the internal floating subs we have hired. We cancel professional development or meetings during the school day that require subs. This includes both district and building PD. We canceled instructional leaders' meetings in November and December, so principals could be in their buildings to support with the sub shortage. We create a sub-rotation schedule for K6 classroom teachers using TOSSAs, which are Teachers on Special Assignment, and district administrators. This is a tiered system that includes the building rotation and district TOSSAs, POSAS, so Principals on Special Assignment, and every district administrator with a teaching license, including our Assistant Superintendent. She says, "Including myself." There have been several days covered internally using this approach. It's important to note, when admin like myself sub, our other duties and responsibilities do not go away. For example, when I sub, I typically work in the evening and well past midnight. And many staff on this rotation are out related to COVID. Dr. Lake and myself attended a meeting on Friday morning with legislatures and area superintendents where there was advocacy for funding and support to address ongoing staff shortages that have been compounded by COVID. We will continue to do all we can to address the sub and staffing shortage. And we also have to face the reality that this is not sustainable. While we continue to work to solve the staffing shortage, we have reached a point where we may need to consider shifting temporarily to distance learning. This is why this evening, we are proposing the following. We propose that due to the staffing shortage crisis that we are in, we shift to distance learning temporarily. Distance learning will begin Tuesday, January 18th, as there is no school on Monday, January 17th, and it would run through Friday, January 28th. Friday, January 14th, we'll shift to a non-school day for students, and it would be a transition day for staff. This would give staff a day to prepare for a transition into distance learning and for us to ensure elementary students have devices. In-person learning would resume again on Monday, January 31st. We will provide learning support and supervision of emergency workers and for families whom it would create an extreme hardship. In closing, I want to stress that this would be a temporary shift to distance learning due to our extreme staffing shortage. At this time, we'll open it up for questions, or possibly for Deb. And she says, "I'll be watching the board meeting as you discuss, and I'd be happy to talk more if anyone has questions for me."
Thank you, Director Smith, for stepping in. And both Director Von der Lenny and Director Smith are in place for Melissa, but speaking on their own right, they both have been subbing and working in district leadership roles, and they'll be able to participate in the Q and A as well. And if everyone, I could ask for your patience, if Deb could go ahead and give her a narrative as COVID Coordinator and Lead Nurse in the District, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Okay, as you recall, before break, we had the three days added to our break, which allowed us a 16-day break from prior to January 3rd. And we had sent a message out also encouraging people to do testing during that time because people would, we knew people would be gathering with families. And the community did exactly what we asked, and we're thrilled about that, that people did go and do testing. Prior to break, we were, you know, we have home test kits that we've been getting out to families as much as we can, and whether, whether families took their students or teachers went to community clinics, people did test. We anticipated that we would see a lot of cases. We did not quite anticipate the avalanche that we would experience. And January 3rd was definitely a show of what exactly community spread is all about. These were not students who are giving COVID to each other, you know, between staff and students. This was definitely a community event that, community transmission that definitely spilled into the school. So from the start of January 3rd, everyone in the health offices, their emails were filled, the phone lines were filled, and, you know, we worked as quickly as we could to get back to families, to, you know, those families who reported to us about their positive cases to let them know what their dates would be for return to school. And it has actually taken us days to keep up with it. And knowing that we would anticipate large numbers on January 3rd, I started, you know, contacting families who had already reached out ahead of time, starting about December 28th. So I think before the start of school had already gone through about 30 cases. Well, the high school, in reflection of what last week was, they, they are, they were complete, I mean, every health office has been overwhelmed, but just as an example, last week, the number of positive cases that came in to the health office that they have contacted families to determine what their dates would be because of these positive cases was 170. And then we thought, well, what would the second week look like? And on Monday, yesterday, they had 50 cases. The school that I'm most closely tied with is Parkview, and up from January 30 to about now, we're somewhere between 60 to 75 cases. Now, when we have positive cases in school, one of the requirements is that we do need to report these through RedCap to the Minnesota Health Department. And we will do that. We are behind. I have long lists because every phone call to a family is, you have to determine when the symptoms started, when the positive test was. It's a process to get all the accurate information. And by the same token, for the district dashboard, the way the data gets to Josh, so he's able to crunch numbers and have it posted, it is a survey that we complete, and then that goes in, and we're extremely behind on that. So those numbers don't even reflect the volume that we are seeing in every single school. Additionally, on the Minnesota Department Health website, in the last podcast from Dr. Mike Osterholm, he had even mentioned that the health department is overwhelmed with data, and, you know, they can't even keep up with the data. I would also add that the home tests that we have been able to provide to staff and families, the Binax Now and the BB Veriter tests, those aren't even reflected in the health department numbers. Those are numbers that they, for whatever reason, they are, they don't post on the, on the website of the health department, it's lab confirmed, these are home tests, and that is something that may change in time. So any numbers you see is truly a small reflection. So how does that feel on the front lines for our nurses and our health assistants? They are all working enormous additional hours, and also while we are short-staffed. We have been short-staffed since, we've been, you know, short nursing staff since beginning of the year, but during this period of time, we have had upwards of eight people who have been out at any given time. And really, every evening, the nurses text each other to figure out who's gonna be here tomorrow, who's out, who's in, who has COVID, who has symptoms. And we had to essentially close health offices because there was no one who could cover the office and just said, you know, if you need someone for an emergency, you'd have to call or, and then have a secretarial staff pick up. I've worked in three different, well, actually, four, five different schools within the last several days, just simply because the nurse and the health assistant was out in one building, and then also in another building, so that we could have someone there to provide house support for the school. It's exhausting, and we are behind, and because every, every day, your email is filled with more positive tests. The upside, the good side of this is that people are testing, and this is what we wanted. We wanted to keep the people who have positive cases out of the school. But this surge is truly extraordinary, and it's unlike anything we have ever experienced during the whole period of time. We have always gone through the process to process positive cases, meet with, you know, get the information from the family, but cannot keep up. So that is, that's kind of how it looks in the health offices right now.
Thank you, Deb. I think you summed it up well. People should be testing, and all the positive cases are also keeping our staff full. Thus, the proposal to shift to distance learning. I need to announce, too, Michelle informed me that we were notified that the streaming service was stopped due to a network issue at Ross. So I apologize, as I mentioned, the community is very interested in this discussion. Is that still the case? Please.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lake. So we followed up on that, so there is a network issue. They are addressing, but the remedy to this will be as soon as this meeting is over. It will, the entire meeting recording will be posted to YouTube.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you. And I think with that, we're all open to stand for questions from the board.
Chair Johnson, thank you, and team, thank you very much for, again, a very fair report. So my, so then actually, my understanding is that this is a very different, there's a very different basis for this request than we've seen at all in the last two years. This is not really being recommended or thought of as a mitigation strategy against infection. It is really totally because of the staff shortage. And it's not that we don't have staff on staff, it's that they're sick, or their families are sick, or they're positive, or their family is positive, or in some way, shape, or form, they're off or recuperating or have to be quarantined. And because they're not super, super people, and so they were not immune to being infected, just as none of us are immune from being infected. So if it weren't for the staff shortage, we wouldn't even be thinking about this, right? It's really a staff issue.
Absolutely, 100%. And our staff's children are being moved into distance learning. And that will continue.
So just a quick follow-up to that. So the proposal is for two weeks. So given then what has to happen to get through the crisis is enough of the staff have to get through the recovery period, the quarantine period, whatever, and be able to come back. What's your confidence level that the two weeks is sufficient? And I'm not lobbying to make it longer, but I just want to know what the confidence level is, because the worst situation is if we get, you know, 12 days from now, and we suddenly realize, oh, my gosh, two weeks wasn't enough. Is it, is, are you confident that it's predictable to the point that we, that you believe? What's your level of confidence that two weeks is sufficient?
Thanks for the question. I think I'll let Deb respond to the peak in the surge and what you know from that standpoint.
Okay, so two things. Thinking to a year ago when we moved to Rome in November, very different situation because that was pre-vaccine. It was more about in-school transmission, rising cases and concern about, you know, preventing hospitalizations and serious illness. That's not the situation here. We have, there are things in place, vaccines are available for those who want them. This really comes down to the ability to maintain staffing. And as far as what could be different in two weeks, the CDC did make a media statement over break about a recommendation of reduction of isolation from 10 to five days. They didn't provide any guidance on it until quite some time later, and then the health department wanted to review the CDC guidance to, before they, so they could come up with some clear parameters. For instance, if you have symptoms, then you test positive, where do you count the five? If you're totally asymptomatic, how do you count the five? If you test positive, and then three days later, you develop symptoms, where do you count the five? We, we need the details. And there will be an MDH webinar tomorrow at 3 o'clock where they're gonna go through that in great detail. And then additionally, on Monday, we had a meeting with the regional support team where the state epidemiologists and a couple of other health department representatives even explained that they had some difficulty with interpretation of exactly of where we, you know, how to put this into place. So my hope would be, within two weeks, we're gonna have a whole lot of people who will be in that 90-day period post-COVID infection, that you have a level of protection. We will also have people who are vaccinated and boosted. Well, this, and then the Omicron from Johns Hopkins had a couple of really good news posts on January 7th explaining, you know, looking at... on January seventh explaining, you know, looking at, um, you know, other countries and, and they, you know, models and what it would look like, and the anticipation is a sharp spike up with a abrupt drop. So it seems that two weeks is an opportunity for everybody to take a breath, to, to let people complete their isolation, to review the, what MDH is gonna present to us tomorrow at three o'clock, and see if this is something we would like to consider for our district. It will definitely, there are people where it may make complete sense to have a five-day isolation. We can get students back that more quickly, and then certainly will have a positive impact on staffing. In the middle of crisis, we can't get this all done to be able to implement it in the way it should be. So, um, three o'clock tomorrow, MDH will be going through what their interpretation is of the CDC guidance that was initially made as a media statement over the winter break.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions?
I have another one unless someone else has. Go ahead. Just come back to me later, yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the groups, like, that will have, like, the childcare or any other? Is there any vulnerable groups that we worry about if we went to distance learning that? How, and how we would handle those groups?
Yeah, so just, just, I'm, 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 I'm clear on what you're, what you're asking. So I, I think you're referring to, like, the emergency workers?
Yes, emergency workers. And then, like, if we have special ed students or other students, that how we would take care of those students are what we did the last time. I know we're up to three days. I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about how we would handle those students.
Yeah, yeah, I can speak a little bit of that, and then maybe if anybody else wants to chime in on that.
Go ahead and start. We can all add in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll, so, so we had some, some discussions around that. You know, um, um, much of what we're, we're doing is, is based off of kind of what we did previously when we had this, right? Like, who, who would we provide childcare for, who would we provide services for? And so we, um, will continue to provide the, those childcare and services for our emergency workers, but we're also adding the extra adage that if it's, um, providing any extreme hardship for families, that we want to try to work with those families as well. So it could be a number of different groups that you're talking about as far as who we would service. Uh, we, you know, special ed is, is another kind of situation as well, where we would look at those students on a case-by-case basis as far as servicing those particular students. And I might be going too deep with this, but, um, you know, it, uh, with special ed students, it's all based on what it says in their I, and then their IEPs. And so we'll need to look at those IEPs and make decisions off of that. But yeah, I think you might have a better answer for that.
Director Tarr. Exactly. See, special education services. So in our previous three days, we did just a synchronous. It's part of the expectation that they get as much synchronous learning as possible through distance learning. And like I said, as much as possible. We do have students that are, that just can't do that. So then, uh, the case, it will be expected, the case management will redesign to a new plan. And we can help to provide some kind of services for us.
Just.
We probably have more to add to that, too. I think it's.
Anyone else want to jump in?
In addition, it would be providing some support, which we haven't done before at the secondary level, to be able to open up our schools in terms of creating area learning space for those students, and that would be a new addition. I, I don't want to speak to the specifics because that's a new program and needs to be developed over the course of the next three days, but we are hoping to open our schools, certainly to those who need assistance with distance learning, or even just a safe and place to access Wi-Fi. So trying to think of all of our services. Um, this proposal also will include nutrition services, transportation, again, just global care for our kids as much as we can. And I did mean to cut you off, Dr. Smith.
No, no, you, you, I, I would love to say, that's what I was gonna say next, but you did a great job.
And that was my follow-up, was that if it's a student who isn't necessarily in a formal IEP, but we've heard from parents that their kids just, it's not only they don't thrive, they, they're at risk. They're, they're at emotional and mental health risk at home. You're work, you're, you'll work out the details for a way for those kids to still come to some physical location and provide them an opportunity to get, to get out and not just be isolated in their house.
That's correct.
And clarification, did I correctly hear that we're going to be able to offer transportation to those?
We're going to be able to offer transportation routes to all of our elementary students for childcare, not our secondary students.
Okay, but we have space available so the secondary students could come?
Correct, correct. And well, details will be forthcoming, I anticipate, no later than Friday for families, for the secondary plan.
Did I understand correctly that, that it, that this two-week period, it would be synchronous or asynchronous? Do we have enough staff to help out even with synchronous learning?
Yes, yes, we are looking to do synchronous learning.
And that's a good question and a good point to make for our community. So thus the reason for canceling school on Friday, to allow teachers time to prepare all of their synchronous lessons. And students are really missing the eight days of in-person because of the way the calendar works. Monday is Martin Luther King Holiday, the seventeenth. And then the Monday after is a professional development day in Roseville Schools. So it is an awful long and important eight days, but versus ten days in that situation. So the biggest move is from asynchronous back to the synchronous learning for students. So to ensure that smooth transition.
Because I, I think that's a key difference, too.
It is.
When you're not asynchronous learning, we, we know, my own child would do it. And it, you know, it'd be maybe like a, a pre-recorded or a video they would watch. But any feelings of being, a student feeling maybe isolated, or, or checking out, or just not feeling a part of a classroom with that asynchronous, that can be really tough. If we can get that synchronous, synchronous model, we have enough staff for that. At least, I know it's not in-person, but it's, I mean, if, if it's right there, it's still live, it's that synchronous learning, I think that's at least a lot better than the asynchronous.
Thank you for that.
If I could make one more point, too, with so many students and staff in isolation, we have a lot of, I mean, over two hundred students from our high school who are at home, who could learn, but they're in isolation. Same with staff. There are staff and students who are not well, and would, you know, truly are taking sick days. But there are people who tested positive, and they're following the guidelines that have been in place since the beginning of the pandemic of attending isolation. But they could potentially be teaching, just as the students could be participating while they're in the, um, in isolation at this point in time.
I appreciate that, Deb. I think another point to be made, too, is the, not only the difficulty simply from the extreme staffing shortages that we're experiencing, we're also experiencing really high rates of student absence that we've never seen before in our schools. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we average about a three percent student absent rate in Roseville Schools, from what I understand. And now at some of our schools, we're approaching twenty to twenty-five percent of our students are absent every single day. So as a teacher to be able to manage teaching in-person and wrapping their arms around students who are at home is just another extreme challenge we're facing.
So the bottom line is, and I, like, just to bring it home, right, in a way I can actually feel it, I heard that one of the schools the other day literally had, I think it was seven classrooms, that literally had no teacher to actually be in the room with the kids running the class.
At seven AM.
At seven AM. You had to scramble, and that was not known because people called in, or they were quarantined, or they got sick, or whatever. So seven out of like twenty or so.
Seventeen.
Seven out of seventeen rooms, unmanned, unstaffed. Okay, all right. So that's the crisis we're dealing with. And so I guess I'll reiterate again, just to be sure that the two weeks is enough time for you to think that that can self-regulate and, and be corrected.
Education is a reflection of what other industries are facing as well. And I think what other industries would do if they had thirty-five percent of their, their staff load.
Were there, um, so that's the reality. Were there other, other ways, other things, other pathways that you thought, thought about or talked about, other than going to Yale for two weeks, that, you know, you could share what you thought of and what the, what the cons were, why they weren't really adequate compared to going to a full distance learning for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, well, we exhausted all the options we had internally. If we can remember back to what Director Smith was saying about our tiered systems of subbing, all hands-on-deck approach. We've increased pay for our substitutes. We've had extra positions. We've hired floating subs. We've been able to hire some paras in. We've had nursing and health office assistants and paras openings for two years, Deb?
Yes.
With a very high failure rate, uh, just due to worker shortage, again, across all industries, but certainly in education. Uh, in terms of the shift, um, there was a consideration for a one-week shift, and we just were not confident that all the quarantine and exposures could be over within those seven days to extend it to the full fourteen days in combination to the peak predicted towards the end of January versus sooner than that.
Like, had that been when our nurses started going out to agencies, and the agencies not being able to do that?
Well, because we're not the only school district that's calling those agencies. We're competing for those subs across the entire metro, if not the whole state of Minnesota.
Correct. There are no nurse subs. We, we just cover for each other. When, when one or two of us are out, we shift schools, and that's how we do it.
Well, myself, just happening to work for a major Minnesota healthcare system, we're having the same issues with shortages of nursing staff and bedside staff, uh, just like this, too.
Yeah, excuse me, could I add to that also? In the other area of operations, even, we have eighteen percent of our custodians are out right now.
Oh.
Um, so that's something we monitor daily. We've been juggling with nutrition staff. We have caught up a little bit as far as hiring goes, but we do, um, we have illness there also in the district center and daily contact with our transportation provider as far as how things are looking there, or our transportation providers. I mean, we have sixty buses through Centerline, and they've been great, and everyone's doing their weekend, but it's requiring constant communication and coordination.
You mentioned that there are at least a couple buildings that have very high levels. Did you consider just closing those buildings? And if you did, can you explain for us why that wasn't a good option?
Yeah, we considered closing them. The trend is in all our buildings, staffing shortages increasing in combination of traveling staff and staff with families. We also believed it would be a hardship for families to have split children at different age levels and not have older children to help care for and provide support during a shift to distance learning. That, that was really the driver of that, just the unfortunate anticipated. And, and the, I think the challenge of communicating while closing one building at a time in the district, I think would be another hardship on our families, just looking every day to see if their school was open, so that we could be clear in our communication, give enough time for families to plan, all move together, all shift together as a district.
One of the things I found very impactful when I was listening this morning to the Roadmap to Return Committee, which is a group of parents and, uh, and, and staff, et cetera, is an individual mentioned that in their district, they literally got a call at six-thirty the night before that school was closed for a period. And not just a day, but a extended period with an evening notice, and that was it. And I just thought, my goodness, that would be, I mean, one of my biggest concerns with doing this is, is parents and being able to, um, you know, the challenges of parents. So I really appreciate the fact that we are looking at providing some kind of, uh, support for families in extreme hardship, as well as having our high school building open for students who need that contact, the mental health concerns. I, I appreciate that you gave extra thought to those who need that extra support and are really going to, this is a particular hardship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you, too. This is, I know, no easy decision, right? We don't want this if we don't have to do this. So really appreciate the deliberation that went on to make this tough decision. And I also appreciate that, you know, I was thinking about how, how do we talk about this so that we are not shutting down, right? There's some talk about shut, it's really, we are shifting, that learning will continue so that our students continue to learn. So I think that's something is in our language, right? How do we communicate it is we are not shutting down. We are taking, um, from in-person to distant learning in order to really address the challenge that we have at hand. So I really appreciate that. And I really was very worried about the mental health because we have heard so much from parents who are worried about students who just do not do well with distance. So, so I think I was just thinking about how, whether you can say a little bit more about, given how much we have learned from last time we've done it versus this time, I'm already hearing the fact that high school is open. That's new. It's a new program. Are the other things, because we have learned so much, that we are really considering it differently this time in the way that we are doing it? I just would love to hear more about that.
I think I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. It's a, I think, a cry to our staff to improve what we've learned. Right? We're lifelong learners as our teachers. So we're reverting back to distance learning, but actively synchronously with our students. What have we learned? We're also incorporating our SEL standards into daily check-ins. So it's not only one-off mental health supports. It's every day, including related services and our counselors, uh, doing regular check-ins with our students. And, and I want to be clear, too, because I agree with the community input earlier. This is not where we want to be. It's best for our students to be in person. And this is, a shift to distance learning isn't something that our staff are asking for, right? This decision will be disappointing for so many folks across the stakeholder groups in our district. This is a, this is a recommendation that we're making because we absolutely have to. An emergency situation for our schools.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just kind of add from a building perspective. Recently being principal in the building, um, we, we learned a lot about synchronous learning and, and better ways to do that. And so I, I would believe that going into this time, even bef, even when we were in distance learning or hybrid, we were making changes to how we did synchronous learning so that it would be more, more, more effective. So that'll be a, 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 something that you'll see that should be better than it was before from what we've learned. I would also say that, um, and, and I would assume this is true for my, my other principal colleagues, but in my building, we had a good sense of who was struggling with distance learning, which families needed support during these times. And so we, we, we would be going into, we wouldn't be going into this blind to that particular effect. I mean, I know we have new students and things like that, and some situations change. But understanding, okay, this student did not do well during this time, and this was a support that we gave them during that time that helped to, to also see some better results, and starting from there, instead of starting at the bottom like we, like we did initially.
I would also mention that it's, it's, if you see the quality of education that goes on in a, in a school that has so many staff out, and you're pulling from people from everywhere, the, it just, the, the quality is not to where we would say it's, it's, it's an appropriate situation that we're feeling like we're moving forward as well, too. So going to a distance learning format provides actual direct contact with, with classroom teachers rather than continuous subs that have been in place for weeks at a time. So, and, and often rotating people, people coming in for two hours, maybe one hour, filling in as they can when they have an open prep time or some other kind of time, too. So I was in a classroom today, spent this morning at Central Park in a third-grade classroom, and, um, I can tell you, I'm not a very good backup quarterback to the teacher there. I tried my best, but threw a lot of interceptions, I think, today, so we tried.
Thank you. Thank you, Jake, for.
That was helpful. Yeah.
One may be a comment, and then another one may be a question. Keep in mind, I'm new, so I don't know enough about, I don't know. But will it affect our activities at all? How will they be affected?
Activities will continue under the guise of the State High School League for fine arts and athletics.
Okay. And then the other thing is, uh, when I heard Deb talk, our staff seems like there's some stress there. Is there anything we're doing to help them as they deal with? Because sometimes, you know, you take, when you hear the stuff from your families and your students, you take that on you, and I worry about how the staff, the health staff, the teachers are taking that on them. Is there anything that we can provide or help them as they work through some of these?
We do need to care for them and love them, and they are overworked and very, very stressed. I believe my global answer would be, and of course Deb and others can respond, the shift to distance learning, right? The day on Friday to provide some planning in order to have effective lessons planned for the following two weeks, right? The support, the ability for teachers to work with their students on one platform versus, I made the comment earlier, trying to support the kids in their class and distance learning at the same time is very stressful on staff. Our health offices, and Deb spoke to that, are completely overwhelmed, and it's just unsustainable for your own health as a nurse in our community, and we need to take pause. And thank you for the question. And thank you for the question.
I could just dig a little deeper into the events thing. So I think we understand that, that the Minnesota High School League does have, I don't know if that word is jurisdiction, over things like games and sporting events, there are plays or there are things that are going on. And just to be clear, we have continued to do those with the mitigation strategies that we have either passed as policy or that's recommended in terms of masking, social distancing, all that kind of stuff. And again, since the crisis related more to staffing in the classrooms, not as a mitigation of the spread of disease itself, because we're doing the things already we think are successful with that, or as successful as they can be, that that ties into going ahead with those kinds of things. And I know we did have a comment from a parent or two about, you know, the kind of traditional, I think one of the emails I saw, traditional was like, let's pack the gym kind of thing. But I've learned that we're not doing that, right? That the word is going to go out, that we are not intentionally going to try to create super-spreader events. That we're not going to do that. Events will continue, activities will continue, but we're not going to say, hey, everybody come on down, you know, and let's just party. That that won't be happening. Is that correct?
Yeah, full mitigation strategies, and we have shut down activities when COVID is present within those activities. So keeping a daily eye on all of the activities and have a reporting procedure in place as well.
Great.
Could you talk to technology and the supporting role of technology, how we're dealing with devices, how we're dealing with hotspots?
Sure. Do you want me to open, Jake, or Sherry?
Yeah, I mean, I can talk through, I know that so for our sixth through twelfth grades students, they already have an iPad issued for them, and we do have lists at each of our buildings of students that do need a device or hotspot. We have had those because of the need for quarantine and isolation throughout this fall. So we've been collecting those lists and have active lists. We'll work with our school buildings and our staff at the buildings to make sure that we hand those out as much as possible on Thursday when students are available, and then following up, continuing through the next week as well if there's a need.
Yeah, we'll hand out devices on Thursday, and if there's additional needs, families can contact the school and they can come and pick up a device on Tuesday.
And we do have an adequate supply of hotspots as well for those that need them.
Just one final thing, and it's a broken record. It's again, just my feeling for the families and those kids that, like we've been saying, not just can't make it, but that are in actual, you know, danger of trauma by being isolated at home. And so we've said, they're recent going to be available for them to come and come to whatever it is. Just the messaging on that, you know, if I have never needed a particular kind of help, the first problem I have is even figuring out how to get it or where to go for it. And so for its families that have kids with IEPs or are kind of involved in the special ed system, they kind of already have those connections. But I'd encourage us to be clear on the website messaging that if you're, if this is new to you, but you have a student that you just really, really worry about, fear for, if they're isolated even for these two weeks, who do you contact? What phone number do you call? What do you do so that the district can address that individually and help that family out to make sure that that kid isn't at home at risk in an isolated way? So.
Yeah, thank you for that. We're also working with our cultural liaisons, our English language learners and our families to ensure that everyone receives that support.
I have one more question, speaking of communication. So during these two weeks, you know, we think that two weeks is enough. We hope that it doesn't extend any longer. How do we maybe keep our families and community informed on what we find out and what else we know? So that, so that, you know, so that maybe we really encourage families to stay alert, right, for communication from the district for any changes, right? Just so that, so that, I mean, with the context we have, who knows what happens? And I just, I just want to make sure the family knows that we're, this is what we think, this is, we think is sufficient. And that we will keep you informed, right, of any changes, any updates, things like that. Just want to make sure the communication is clear that way. And I know Joshua will do that.
Thank you, Director Chu. That's a great, that's great feedback. We're going to be, we intend to communicate yet this evening to our families and to our staff to make them aware of this. And in the coming days, they will hear also from their teacher, or from their teachers and from their principals, building principals, about those details. Because that's really where I particularly like that support, that social emotional support, in the secondary grades, as we put together the details of that plan of what does it look like for those students who may be taking advantage of that new type of support where they're coming in and using the Wi-Fi, that sort of thing. So there will be details communicated out in the, you know, beginning tonight and through the coming days.
I like hearing about the area learning spaces, and I know we said at the secondary level, it's probably too much to ask at some of the elementary buildings to do some of that, or was that, was there a discussion about, you know, getting to the point of isolation, depression? Let's just be honest. I've seen emails and talked to folks about these kids go down a path, they're depressed, and we're talking about suicidal thoughts. It, it, it's, I know it's an emergency, and I really want to help our staff, but it's hard to go for this. I mean, for the distance learning, what we're doing to some kids, I mean, it's not a good alternative when you start talking about depression, isolation, suicidal thoughts. I mean, I just want to make sure, we've got to be aggressive with these kids or with these families who are calling us with, I know it's two weeks, but, you know, boy, it's already two or three days. My fourth grader at M and D Williams is really, you know, there may not be a learning space in the school for them. But we've got to make sure that we're right on target with them, and it doesn't go any further. It's, I mean, it's horrible choices to choose from. I get that, and I just, I know it's an emergency, but we have to, we really have to be there when we're getting those calls on whatever hotline or whatever. Kids are feeling isolated, depressed, and they're having really scary thoughts because of this distance learning. I'm just really scared of that.
Director Anderson, I can assure the district leadership agrees with you, and thus the addition of any family experiencing hardship, that we want to welcome students into our communities. We're also working to set up a plan where we'll shift some secondary staff into our elementary buildings to ensure that they are staffed there to care for them.
Thank you. With that, I guess I would entertain a motion.
Relaxing.
I will, I will move, and we can still have further discussion, I must admit, but I will move emergency recommendation that we move only to a two-week distance learning to really deal with our current ongoing crisis, staffing shortages, and to take a collective breath. Second.
And with the safeguards we've already talked about in place, the communication in place, I'll second the motion.
Discussion? I can't say that, I just, I'm going to be honest here, I can't say that if this continues that I'm going to be able to vote for distance learning again. I'm just laying that on the table. I, that's not trying to sound harsh to anybody, but there's just, it's not the right model. It's just, and I, choosing between, it's just a horrible choice. I'm just, maybe I didn't need to say it, but I need to be honest with myself and with the board and the community. I don't know that I could vote for it again. So. I guess the, I'll throw my two cents in. First of all, Todd, I appreciate your candor. And truly, what it does come down to is that, that sometimes, oh, we have our bad choices, right? But we still have to choose. And this, what we're doing right now is not working. Okay? And I can honestly say, I have a kid in, after all this, she's not going to be happy about this.
Yeah.
Okay? And she's got a right to not be happy about this. But our, what it comes down to is our responsibilities are to our students and our staff, and our staff are breaking down. And there's a, there is a reasonable expectation that within two weeks, our staff will be in a place, at the very least, a much better place to continue through the rest of the year. As stated before, this is not about our COVID rates, per se, yeah, and the COVID rates inside schools, okay? Because they're already like crazy high. But we, it doesn't, it doesn't help our kids if we have kids in our buildings and there's no one to teach them. You know, so yeah, I, that, I guess that's all I'll say about that.
Well, I think, you know, Todd, your earlier question and emphasis, I share that too, in that it's across the board. It's from elementary and secondary, both, that if I'm a parent of a child that is at real risk for self-harm or for advanced depression or emotional issues while isolated at home, we need to provide that option to allow them to come to a facility serving as a safe learning space. Even if it means there's a group of, whatever, picking up ten, fifteen kids sitting around just doing distance learning, but as a group, with the interaction, with the ability to relate, with the ability to emote with each other, with the kind of structure that some kids just need that's not home, that's away, that's within kind of a formalized school, school building. If that's there, then that's the kind of safety issue that will allow me to vote to support the recommendation. That has to be committed to. We have to have that.
I think your point that there's no good options is what all of us believe. I don't think there's any discussion about what's a good option. It's a question of what's the best option at this point in time with the information we have available. And if we truly have, you know, a quarter of our students missing, we have significant staff missing, so the education our students are receiving now is kind of haphazard. Whoever we can find to be in that space and in that room, that's not high-quality education either. And if this gives us an opportunity to return to somewhat more systematic teacher, the teacher appropriate for that group, that has some advantages. Clearly, it has some disadvantages that we very much talked about, and we're trying to do what we can to offer options there. So it's not a great option, but I will go in favor as well.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to say the same too. I think Jake really, when you mentioned that, right, when you think about the, from the student's experience, right now, it's not that good when you have teachers out because they are sick and that they are getting subs, different hours, different people coming in. That's not the kind of education that we promised them in a lot of ways. So there is no good option. And so hopefully this is temporary and that these two weeks will give us, give us some time to really kind of get through this hump and then get back to the business of what our students deserve and what our staff deserve, right? It's also that, right? You, I mean, we could push them until they burn out, and how is that good for anybody too? So this is, yeah, this is not an easy choice, and I really am so grateful for that option about, you know, to address the mental health, and I hope that we really, really, really think about, you know, students that we know already who weren't successful before. How do we reach out, right? How do we reach out to make sure that they are okay? So, yeah, I'll be voting yes for sure.
One last thing that I'll throw out here is, I really, I really appreciate that each and every one of you have taken what you've learned, yeah, what you've learned and have applied it. Okay, this is, this is not a great situation, okay? But at every, at every opportunity, everyone is trying to make it as best as possible. And it's easy just to go, okay, let's just do what we did last time. It's like, no, there was never a moment where that was a thing, okay? It was like, okay, we did, this is what we did, this was not great. How do we address that? And so for that, I'll be voting yes. If there are.
I moved it. I moved it. Sorry.
We have a, we have a motion that's been moved. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Sorry?
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
I thank you guys so hard.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
And maybe in this space, I'll say the biggest thank you goes to Deb Legan as our lead nurse and all of our nurses and health staff in the district.
Okay, if I'm reading this correct, it takes us to our study session report. Not for you.
At the Distumper Study Session, we had two things on our agenda, but the first was so rich and so long that we ended up having just one. And that was talking about the Futures Project overview. And this project was a group of our, of folks from our district that represented a cross-section of stakeholders and really looked at trends and scenarios for about ten to twenty years out to help enable thinking about policy work and other foundational preparation needed for that longer-term desired future. The catalyst for this particular project was a statewide effort from the Minnesota School Board Association where they took individuals from some different districts and tried to do this kind of work at the state level and then asked that the groups do some work at the individual district level. And in our district, we had the opportunity to do something a little bit deeper and really valuable, particularly as we were looking to start up strategic planning this year. It was really helpful to try to take a longer-term question, longer-term look at things. Futures thinking is very complimentary to strategic planning because strategic planning tends to look at in buckets of five years. But if you don't do some of the work for what you want twenty years from now, when you're just looking at five-year buckets, you may not have that preparatory work. And there are often legislative changes that are needed. For example, seat time is very much specified in the legislature today, but yet is a real inhibitor if that doesn't change to do some of the community learning that we've talked about. Also, there's often, you know, various trends that are contrary to the direction we'd like to go, and one has to work to mitigate them early on to get us in the right direction, and then building the foundational things that we need in order for that to happen. So this group looked at a variety of possible futures, an ideal future or a vision. They looked at some alternative futures that are within the realm of possible, especially the farther out you look, the more is uncertain, the more range of possibilities there are. They looked at various scenarios, and with the vision in mind, they tried to do some. And with the vision in mind, they tried to do some backwards planning, not just forward planning, to give some insight. They recommended that when we embark on our strategic planning effort, we do it in a very inclusive way, including certainly underrepresented groups, but also groups who, who don't like the direction our district is taking, to try to get all the voices at the table so that we can build a unified perspective behind what our students need for success. And that we think about some of those, uh, long, um, work that needs to be done in the next five years in order to develop that foundation capability of getting where we'd like to go farther. So that was what we spent our study session on.
All right. Thank you very much. As always. Board reports.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the only thing I had was the Equity Alliance Foundation news, which I shared earlier, so I'm, I'm good.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, um, I know three of us were at the AMSD Legislative Session Preview, and I know there's some staff zoomed in. So I know we probably have a few things to say. I guess I just wanted to highlight that some of our area legislators were present. Senator Chuck Uyghur, who was on the Senate Education Finance Committee. Representative Alice Housman was there, Senator John Marty was there. And I guess what I'll do is I'll just mention, the first part of the session was three great presentations by some area superintendents going over the AMSD platform, reducing mandates, enhancing local control, ensuring safe, modern school facilities. Part of that was a discussion around LTFM expansion and increasing and diversifying our teacher workforce. That's, that's, those are some of the highlights that I, I took. I guess I'll leave some other updates for my colleagues. And then, um, a meeting of the District Curriculum Activity, District, uh, DCAC last night, sorry, sorted out with a wonderful presentation from Dr. Yang Chang with the Office of Educational Equity. She works with Jake and Delon about some online learning possibilities next year. Again, only optional and just a real high-level bird's eye view, but just what would online learning look like for those that want to partake in that program? But just some fascinating areas about what we can be doing, some really good questions that my colleagues on that committee asked. And they're still obviously working on some things, and we're gonna hear more about it as a board. But some really fascinating opportunities there. Let's see, and I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Go ahead, kid. Okay, there's one that I'd like to give a little bit extended, like maybe a minute or so, and then these others I'll sit on really quickly. But what I want to talk a little bit more about is the Educa, uh, Edgerton Family Story Circles. It, it, I had the privilege of being part of this second session that they ran. They have a series of three sessions they're running. The first ser, first one was just for families. And this is a, being done in partnership with the Minnesota Humanity Center, and they've been running all the meetings. But then the second one, which is the one I got to attend in December, was where the families shared their stories with staff that they talked about in the first session. And then they, each of the different language groups, because this is all being done simultaneously in Korean, Mong and Spanish. So in essence, there's a translator and then talking English, they translate into all these three languages. And then there's the, when they're talking, then the translator translates back to English. And it may be then translated to Mong or what the other group is, so that all the groups can understand each other. And being able to do that virtually is really impressive. I know that the district, we partnered with the Humanity Center pre-pandemic, where we've run a similar program at Central Park. But we're now doing this in a virtual environment, which adds so much complexity, but really was executed very beautifully. Um, the goals of it are really to bridge and create stronger relationships with school families by intentionally prioritizing voices that are not typically heard to better understand the issues and joys experienced in the Edgerton community. What, there were kind of three, so after the group, you know, shared what they had and then these individual groups went off and kind of summarized and synthesized what they had, and we all came back together and we agreed on, on some key themes. And those five key themes I thought was worthy of, of mentioning. The first one is really building on the strength that Edgerton provides in love and compassion and respect. And, and, you know, how can we help foster that between students and students and students and families more? Even further building on the strength of that community. The second one was improving our communication engagement to really strengthen the two-way communication and to provide more and different ways of family engagement. The third one I found very interesting, which was navigational support. And the topic that was of most concern to people was report cards. That the symbols on the report cards, they didn't understand. And if they, once they even understood the symbols, they didn't understand the significance. So what does this mean? What are we supposed to do with this as parents? And, um, and so that was, that was fascinating to hear about. The fourth one is around celebrating the diversity in the schools, that they have a lot of different cultures in their building and really having the opportunity to share their culture with others, with the school and classmates. And the last one is one we've talked a lot about tonight, and that's prioritizing mental health. So those were the five key themes that I thought was worthy of all of us understanding. And this whole, this whole opportunity and program is so exciting. On Thursday afternoon, the social worker, Mar Bishop, from Edgerton, will actually be presenting along with Delon and Cecilia Martinez on, you know, really, really partnering with families and improving student success through that at the MSB. So if anybody's interested on that, we did actually video our dry run. So we do have that available as well for anybody who would like to learn more about the work we're doing with underserved communities. It is, I'm just very excited by what the district is doing here. To me, that's a, a real area of exciting development. And it's amazing to see that even in these times, as there's so many other distractions. The Central Park PTA meeting I attended, uh, the sixth, and there were two things I wanted to share in particular. One was, there was a report from Title I, you have to have reports several times a year, and this time they chose to really focus on kind of math and how the curriculum is different than cognitively-guided instruction, which I keep hearing that term, but I, I didn't fully appreciate what it was until I heard the families talk about it as well as the teachers. And really getting a lot more problem-solving into it and really students coming up with their own ways to answer questions and developing the math knowledge on a deeper level. So for example, before, you know, like the kindergarten teacher was talking about, how does she do this? And she was talking about, well, what do you know about whatever the topic is? And then the next day, you know, kind of going back and what have you learned the previous day? And using that to really feed back the loop. But really not just, okay, what's the answer? But how do you think about it and how do you get there? And like one parent was, was really sharing that, oh, this was so hard for their child at first, but now they're getting a much deeper understanding of the whole material. And that was just really, really exciting to hear. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention is that the challenges that we've been talking tonight about staffing came up at the meeting. I mean, they were, you know, they mentioned they have a really positive vibe among the children. You know, there's, it feels good to be in the building, the atmosphere is good. But staff is doing a lot of juggling and trying to, to make things, you know, keep the kids in school. And they did talk about the assistant superintendent had subbed that day. And the kids thought it was pretty cool that, that they had the principal's boss teaching. Yep. Okay, that was the second one. The Optimus Club, I just wanted to give you a heads up. They are doing, trying to get together a project on developing a community of character in our community, kind of a community-wide development of a Roseville-specific set of shared values and positive character, character attributes. Their timing is somewhat different than what we're looking at for our strategic planning, but there is possibilities of maybe ways we can help each other as we're trying to recruit more people in the community to participate in strategic planning. That's one area that is potentially, you know, something synergistic that we can work on. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll just say I was also at the Association for Metropolitan State, no, Metropolitan School Districts. And I think beyond the legislative platform, I thought it was great to have the panel of legislators really talking about kind of their upcoming, it was really great to listen to how they think about education, where they're heading with some of the things that they are thinking about, whether it's local control, whether it is about funding. So that was very, was very insightful, right? Very insightful. And then the other thing that I did was I was able to attend Parkview Center Schools PTA meeting. And, and I left my notes at home, but I, I think the only thing I would say is, um, when I, when I participate in that and they did it over Zoom, I have to say, I'm just so impressed. I want to thank you to the parents who are so engaged, whether from fundraising to putting a festival, some, some festival together. It was just amazing how engaged they are to support the school. So really thank you to the parents who such as contributing so greatly to the community at Parkview Center School. So, so just want to say that.
Next time.
Now you know. All right. Yeah, I've got two things. I also attended the, the, the MSB, AMSD Legislative Preview. And I, I enjoyed every year, partially because we get the opportunity to let legislators know what we're thinking, all right? And we get to look them in the eye and, and figure out, okay, so what are the chances of some of this happening? But it's, it's also, I'm going to, to echo your sentiment, Rose, it's, it's, um, very helpful to see what the legislators' point of view is. Even when it's different than ours, right? But it's, it's just to know, okay, so this is where you're coming from? Okay? So if you ever get the, you know, and I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to perhaps some new people. Uh, if you get a chance to go to AMSD, you need to drop in anytime. It's, it's a, it's a great organization. And Legislative Preview is always interesting. And I'll leave that there. The, the last thing I'll toss out is because I can, and it's actually the last time I'll be able to, to talk about this. Social studies standards, okay? January fourteenth is the last day that you can submit your comments on some really cool standards that some of us spent over a year putting together. So it's really important, please, if you haven't done it, take the time and, and put your comments on it because really it's, it's in the hands of the Department of Ed. And if, um, and then they, they will, they will make changes that are, are completely appropriate, I don't doubt that. But the more support for it, the, the less changes they'll make. So I will leave that there. And I believe you had some other thing that you wanted to add.
Yeah, I'd like to just add a couple of comments to the board. Juan, congratulations and thank you for accepting the role as chair. Look forward to working with you.
Same here.
I'd like to welcome new director Clark to the board. Thank you for accepting the leadership role. It's a large task. And then I'd also like to publicly recognize and thank outgoing chair Mike Bogeshevsky. And not only did Mike chair the board for the past two years during this unprecedented pandemic, he led the board and the district with grace, strength, care, and commitment. As a new superintendent, Mike provided me with a high level of confidence and communication that benefited my leadership and the entire organization. His unwavering commitment to equity in all we do has been demonstrated throughout his tenure as a board member and will be into the future, but it was so very highlighted in his leadership as chair these past two years. His commitment to all students, families, and staff in District 623 is beyond admirable and will not be forgotten. Thank you, former chair Bogeshevsky.
Speech.
Thank you. Like I said, it's been an honor and I look forward to us functioning with Curtis in the role, at least as well, for the next couple of years. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, this concludes the, our meeting.
And then we'll reconvene.
Oh, sorry, sorry. We're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute, we're gonna take a five-minute break and reconvene for our study session, which will not be televised, so.
But it is an open meeting.
But it is an open meeting, so folks that are here, if you want to hang out, hang out. It's thirty. We'll begin at eight forty-five.